Good evening. We welcome you to the adjourned regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Here.
Councilwoman Polly?
Here.
Councilman Mills?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Present.
Marys?
Here. Thank you so much. Today, I'd like to ask our wonderful resident and ex-fire chief, Mr. Bob Bell, if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
One comment first. When we say the pledge, the habit is to pause after you say "one nation." There's no pause. It's one nation under God, right on through. So, put your hand on your heart and follow me. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. That is a good reminder. I think we all do it like habit. Just, you know, we think a pause is there, but I know the right way to do it is the way you've described it. Thank you so much for reminding us. Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask all those in the audience to please silence or turn off your cellphones. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcomes you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to speak on an item contained on the agenda, please approach the podium at the time the item is being considered. After I recognize you, state your name and address for the record prior to providing your comments. Speakers will be limited to a time period of three minutes in most cases. If you wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please do so during the period listed for oral communications. At this time, I'd like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Barnett to mention a little presentation we have.
Last Thursday, I attended the Rotary Breakfast, and they had a competition there for the junior high students that wrote an essay on the Rotary Four Way Test. I don't know who is familiar with that other than the Rotary people here, but the Rotary Four Way Test, which the Rotarians recite every week, is basically kind of a little four-sentence synopsis of ethics, for lack of a better word, you know, consider others, et cetera, et cetera. And we listened to, I think it was six, junior high students from various junior high schools. And as I sat there, it almost brought tears to my eyes because I watched them, and they were so sincere, and they clearly grasped the concepts. They had thought it through so well, and they had written it so well, you know, I couldn't write it that way myself at my age. And I was so impressed that when we were done, I went up to the three winners and asked them if they would come and give their speech tonight. It's only a few minutes. And unfortunately, we only have one. I think two of them, I have no idea what happened, and I'm disappointed, but I'm thrilled to have at least the one. Brittany Chan, Brittany, do you want to come up here and bring your notes and...
Can you read that sitting down too? Are you good reading this down? You okay? Would you rather stand? You can sit down. Why don't you just take my chair? Because frankly, what you're doing should be given from up there and not down here.
You've been elected. Welcome.
That's an improvement.
Hi. Thank you for listening to me and giving me this opportunity to speak. The Rotary Four Way Test. Go out. We have to characterize one of the problematic circumstances that requires a guidance, which can be acquired through a series of fundamental questions, the Rotary Four Way Test. Lies challenge is often arise in the worst of times, causing us to make rash decisions and often taking the easy way out, potentially shifting our lives in ways that will forever change us. Fortunately, reckless choices can be greatly reduced by adopting the Four Way Test. Is it the truth? Is it fair at all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Finally, will it be beneficial for all concerned? These four questions have the potential to help you through troubled times, to shape your life, so you can make better choices, eventually guiding you to your happiness and success. Is it the truth? Honesty is essential for the well-being of others. It is a duty for every responsible citizen to tell the truth. It's the best policy, so why choose anything less than the best? As I have learned over the years, the truth is the far better option in the long run. All the lies someone tells to get out of trouble will eventually come around and haunt you when you're least expecting it. Not only do you lose a person's trust, but you also lose his or her respect as well. If there are vital lessons in life, being honest is one of them. Although the truth may be hard to share and bear, it's not as hard as keeping others from the truth and the disappointment thrown your way when finally admitting to your mistakes. Is it fair at all concerned? Oftentimes, without thinking, you leave yourself to believe that you are being fair. However, your personal opinion of justice might only be when it leaves you in the best possible scenario. Fairness, put simply, should be treating others how you would want to be treated. If, for example, you were involved in some accident along with some other people and blamed it on the others, it would at first relieve the tension. It's fair for you, and you won't get hurt. Say you were the one blamed. Would that be just? No. You weren't the only one involved, and yet you seem to be the only one who gets blamed. Being fair should be not looking out for your best interests, but should be considering others and doing what's right. Will it build goodwill and better friendships? What is goodwill? According to the dictionary, it means to do good toward another person. Better friendships and kindness go hand in hand. Friends who are benign, they care for one another. Nonetheless, what does it mean to have goodwill? People with goodwill are often known to be some of the most charitable society. They serve worthy purposes and are often the best companions. They support you, even in the worst of times. But if there is ever the risk that could possibly hurt your friendship, you face, you could possibly lose them forever. Do you keep those friends and make new ones? Treat everyone with respect, honesty, and fairness, some of the traits incorporated in the four-question test. Will it be beneficial for all concerned? In many instances, someone will look at a situation and think, "What can I do to get the best possible outcome for me?" People who ask this question are selfish. Their thoughts are purely for themselves, and they do not care for others. Nevertheless, considered that if the truth has been told, justice has been delivered, and goodwill has been shown, no one will benefit more than the other, and the situation will be handled in a selfless manner. Will I live with a guilty conscience as opposed to life with a clean slate? Final thoughts. Your everyday decisions, no matter how miniscule they seem at the time, have the potential to make a difference in your future. Sometimes, one can look into the mirror and wonder, "Do I like who I'm turning into?" For better or for worse, your decisions now determine who you will become, and if you find yourself not liking who you're turning into, you obviously have to make a change. By introducing the Four Way Test into your life, you can strive to achieve your goals and reach your full potential. By doing so, you partake in developing a healthy and productive environment for you and your fellow man. Thank you.
Thanks, Brittany. Thank you, Brittany. So, if anybody wondered, there's definitely hope for the next generation. You heard those six young people at Rotary. It was just incredible. Ed Howard was standing there shaking his head as well and, you know, saying, "This is a big chunk of what we got over here," and a big hope for the future. So, anyway.
Awesome.
I'm done.
Thank you, Rick. All right. It's now time to move for oral communications on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city council. If you wish to address the city council, please step to the podium, state your name and address. Oral communications will be limited to three minutes for individual speakers. I know we have one. Mr. Ed, do you want to come up and make a comment? Again, these are for items that are not on our agenda tonight.
Hi, my name is Ed Carter. I'll make this real quick. I'm involved with Villa Park Rotary, also the YMCA, and also the Indian Princes and Guides Program and the Dads Club. I'm sure some of you and Mr. Mills was also involved in the Dads Club. Last year, I started a golf tournament to raise money for the local elementary school. It's called the Dads Club Tournament, and we raised $13,500 for Villa Park Elementary. So, based on its success, we're running the tournament again this year at Strawberry Farms next week, May 7th. We've been fortunate enough to get three separate sponsors who are sponsoring four Marines, four Army personnel, and four Navy personnel who will be our guests of honor at the tournament. If anyone else would like to play in this tournament, all the funds that are raised will be going to Villa Park Elementary, Saravilla. We're going to give a little bit to Mary's Kitchen and Orange and a little bit to the YMCA. So, that's the reason I'm here. If anybody is interested in doing that, we've still got spots. I know we're going to have Mr. Bob's going to be there. I see his smiling face out in the crowd. So, I'd love to see anybody else who's interested down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Awesome.
My name is Mike Henderson, and I live at 1-8482 Serrano. And this is actually aimed at the council here because we live just off of Lemon and just off of the trail that you guys put in some time back, which we really appreciate. And we use that to walk our dog. And of course, we have the dog bags out there, which is really good. But the problem we have is that there's no trash cans out there, and we're finding that people pick up after their dogs, and they have a bag, and they just throw the whole bag with the trash, you know, with the dog waste on the trail. And what I'm asking is if you guys would at least think about maybe setting up a one-year trial, put a couple of garbage cans out there. The reason I say a one-year trial because you don't know whether there's any problems, you know, the cans will get vandalized or anything else, but a trial would at least let you limit your exposure. And put some cans out there, maybe with small openings, so people can't come dump garbage, you know. Whereas they're big enough to put the waste in, the dog waste in, and other small things, like if people pick up cups and want to dump them in there, but not, you know, couldn't come with a big bucket or something and dump their trash in there. So, that's the main thing we're asking for, and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Yeah, that was a good idea. Okay, any other items on oral communications not otherwise on our agenda tonight? Seeing none?
Could we ask Jared to jot... Jared, could you jot that recommendation on the trash cans down so we don't forget about it? Because I think it's a good one.
Okay. We move to our public hearing. We only have one item of business tonight, and that is to continue a discussion regarding the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks in Villa Park. Council members, do you have any questions of staff? All quiet up here. I guess in that case, we will open it up to the public to come up and speak. As most of you know, last council meeting last week, we all got home at 1:15 a.m. Not fun, especially when you work all day. Anyways, tonight, we're going to try to move this along, so if I appear to be kind of rushed, or I don't want to be rude, but I'd like for everyone to kind of come up and not make duplicate comments constantly, if you will. I may kind of cut people off. It's not my nature to do that. I apologize, but we all don't want to be here tonight till 1:00 in the morning again. With that, Mr. McElhany.
Thank you. My name is Bill McElhany. I live at 1-8916 Valley Drive in Villa Park. Been living here for about 44 years and kind of like the place. I've got a couple of comments before I stop my remarks. When we get into this situation of fireworks, whether we should have them or not have them, we asked some of the leagues in the city, like the Woman, the Library, and other meeting places, where, "What is your position on this item?" Most of them all said no. They did not want fireworks in Villa Park. And then, I was waiting to hear from the Rotary Club, who is someone I have worked for in eight years being on the council, and probably more than that, with my fire actual resources and trying to take care of them through the city, as Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and other issues in the city. So, I just want to say that your President Jay McDowell was against fireworks. I just want you to know that in the room here. I know we have a lot of Rotarians here, and I'll probably be hung in effigy when I walk out of here, but they made a decision, and I'm not sure this is true or not, but they made the decision, they were going to make a decision, on May the 15th, when this issue has already been put to bed. So, I was very, very disappointed over that deal. And I just want you to know, I know we've got three Rotarians up here, and I don't think that's the way you should treat us as citizens of the city. My next question is, is there a Furman Leal here tonight? No? Furman Leal wrote an article in the Register this week that we were going to have a meeting tonight, and it just favored other people besides the people sitting here tonight and taking their time to be against fireworks. So, I think Jared, I don't know if he's protecting the city, or you, or whomever. We are the people. We vote these people in, and we want to hear what's going on in the city of Villa Park. We can't go to every meeting, so I hope you correct that situation. I know you disagree with me, but that's all right. So, does everyone hear me okay?
Jared, do you have a timer going?
The mic is not...
Turn it on. Okay. All right, I'll go up front and do the same thing again.
All right, he's going to go back and turn it up. Try to move it along, Bill.
I'm going to. Don't worry about me. I know where you're sitting. Can you hear me well?
Oh, yes.
The audio's gone out.
The audio should be up higher.
Jared went back to turn it up right now.
I have lived in Villa Park for 45 years and have always worked to improve our community. My wife Gwen and I are adamantly opposed to permitting fireworks stands and the sale and use of fireworks in Villa Park. This is not representative of the people of the upscale community that we have become. It is not wise to be the only city in the surrounding area where it will be legal to detonate these fireworks. Many of you are aware, and I attended the March City Council meeting and expressed my concerns, and the council before they voted on March the 2nd. Regarding this ordinance, I was very disappointed that three council members completely disregarded my warnings and voted to approve the ordinance despite the protest of many, many residents that live in this city. And you can see that a crowd here tonight. I wish it was election night. During the years that I have served on the city council and as your mayor, I have always made a point of facilitating dialogue, listening to the residents and respecting their input. Lately, there has been a disturbing trend by the newly-appointed council to treat our citizens unworthy of consideration. This has caused a division in the city. This is not the type of leadership I expect, and it certainly is not the type of leadership I provided. Safety, security, and strong fiscal oversight were always uppermost in my mind when I was your mayor. I was always very mindful of the funding and resources we spend to keep our city safe and clean place to live. One of the issues I raised in March meeting was the limited number of officers we have available to patrol our streets and enforce this new ordinance. We have one officer that takes care of the city of Villa Park, and you've got to hope that night, if we do approve this, that you don't have a fire or something, because you'll probably see him in a couple hours when the house is burnt down. And I'm sorry to say that, but...
Can you wrap it up, Bill, please?
I've got two more sentences. Boy, you're tough tonight.
Hey, I told you.
Well, we might keep you here till 1:00 tomorrow.
Let's go. I won't be here tomorrow.
We will be bringing in an element that we haven't seen before, and my concern is that the impact will be quite dramatic. It may seem like it's too late to stop this bad idea from happening, but it is not. Do whatever you need to do, up to including recall of council members who put the city at risk despite citizen protests. Thank you for listening to me.
(audience clapping) This is Rick. Mayor Pro Tem, 10021 Sycamore Street, Villa Park. I'm going to be blunt. You guys either are dyslectic or suffer from ADD, so wake up. Those council people, I'm going to write down a list. Mayor Reese, if you vote in favor of this ordinance, we're going to recall you. Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, if you vote in favor of this thing, we're going to recall you. Councilman Fasenelli, if you vote in favor of this ordinance, we're going to call you. Councilperson Mills, if you vote in favor of this, we're going to call you. And Councilman Patty, if you vote in favor of this, we're going to call you. Mark my words. We're done. Either wake up, or you're out.
Wow.
I'm not going to be as blunt.
Thank you.
Bill Baker, 1-8301 Hillcrest Avenue, right on the corner of Hillcrest and Center, if you want to stop and talk to me. I'm in favor of fireworks. I learned the most about fire. I grew up in the 50s and 60s. I learned personal responsibility. I learned that you have to hold a sparkler by one end and not the other. I learned that you stand away when you light a firework. Our kids don't know that. They've never done it. When my kids were growing up, my offices in San Ana, where fireworks can be sold and are allowed to be used, I'd take my kids to my office in San Ana, and we'd shoot out fireworks. I have to tell you, the one thing that I've learned growing up and experiencing life is that if you don't do something that has a little tinge of danger to it, you're not going to know how to experience life in its whole. I think that personal responsibility is what governs us every single day, whether you're driving a car, using a chainsaw, shooting at targets, or bear hunting. Personal responsibility. And I think that the opportunity to use and properly use fireworks is important to us. I see no harm that will come to the proper use of fireworks, just like any other device that can be misused. I'm congratulating you on your vote, and I'm encouraging you to continue to vote in favor of fireworks in Villa Park, at least for one year. Let's give it a try and see what happens. Thank you very much. (audience clapping)
Mike Walker, do I have to talk loud?
I think it does work now.
Dennis Kuli, 1-8411 Jacquetal Avenue. I'm here to say one thing. Preserve the procedure. You people went through the procedure properly. You went through it, and you voted. You have a way to get out of it afterwards. To have people come in after the fact and say, "Oh, you didn't listen to me," or, "Oh, we're going to recall you," is not the way this city should be run. We have had a city here for 50 years, and it has run preserving the procedures. Now, all of a sudden, somebody wants to say, "Oh, let's go back and think about it. I wasn't here." Mr. McElhany, you were here. You were here, and they listened to you, and they voted against you. That's democracy. That is not mob rule. The gentleman who... (audience clapping) You know that is a threat. And Dennis? I'm sorry. The recall thing really got to me. That is out of hand. Mr. McElhany is right in coming up and talking. He's talked. He talks like a gentleman. I would ask all the former council people to think back to their AIs on council. Did they second-guess themselves? No. They used the procedure. They lived with it. They voted. When the vote was over, they got on with it, and they went on their way. You have, in this procedure, a fallback position. You're going to listen, try this for one year, then you're going to go back, and you're going to look at it. I urge you, get this stuff out of the way, go forward with it, and have an open mind to look into whether or not it's a good or bad thing to do. I would also urge these people who are here, who are willing with their threats, to try very much to open their minds, observe what happens over the 4th of July week, take notes, get blue facts, and maybe they'll persevere. I don't know. I honestly don't know whether this is a good idea or a bad idea, but I know it's a bad idea to try to destroy the methods that we have in this city, which have helped us for 50 years, and to go on and go back and try to second-guess all of a sudden. Thank you.
I'm Mary Salzow, 1-8202 Montana Circle, Villa Park. I'm here to speak, as I have before, about the fact that I assisted years ago with the Villa Park Band Booster Sale of fireworks in the late 1970s and early 80s. I also served on the Orange County Grand Jury and respect the findings of the 2007, 2008 Grand Jury. I'm going to touch on some of the summary points from that, and I have made some copies if some of you would like to pick them up. The Grand Jury findings are that they recommended the sale of legal fireworks be discontinued and that our cities take a more active role in encouraging community nonprofit groups to fund other sources of funding for their organizations. The 2007 review found that safety officials were unanimous in their opinion that the sale of legal fireworks should be banned. Three, their use contributes to the injury of persons, usually children, and the destruction of private and public property. These are not my opinions. These are taken verbatim from the Grand Jury report, I want to assure you. Legal fireworks mask the use of illegal fireworks in the community and often contribute to the disruption of public order. Police officials believe that they could significantly reduce the usage of illegal fireworks if the sale of legal fireworks were banned. Five, the Grand Jury found that city and safety officials are unable to enforce some municipal ordinances due to the sheer volume of illegal activity. Safety officials stated that roving gangs come from as far away as San Diego to ignite illegal fireworks in the five Orange County cities which permit the sale and discharge of fireworks. Animal country officers see a dramatic spike in calls because of an increase in runaway animals, particularly dogs. Safety officials in the cities authorizing nonprofits to sell fireworks unanimously stated that the sale of legal fireworks significantly impacts their cities. Nine, cities that are bordered by neighboring cities where any fireworks are illegal find the impact on their law enforcement. I understand many of you who like the idea, which I have in fact experienced, of a wonderful family celebration on my friendly cul-de-sac in Villa Park, which were tried in the late 70s or early 80s when our children were middle school age. The idea was all of us would bring our food out, and we would gather on the cul-de-sac, and we'd supervise our kids having safe and sane fireworks, and it would be a wonderful old-fashioned 4th of July celebration like we enjoyed. We got started, and about the time we all got out there with our children, someone was clearly from out of the city, came in in a carload, pulled up at the end of the cul-de-sac, jumped out at the dead end of Center, and began throwing lighted firecrackers into the middle of our celebration. We quickly grabbed our kids, ran back in our houses, and thanked God that we were in our houses instead of taking our kids to the hospital. And I think as responsible adults, we have to accept the fact that these days, there's a lot of difference between the ideal and the real, and we are responsible for seeing to it, that we uphold the real and the reality. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jack Cleary. I live at 1-8352 Saravilla Drive in Villa Park. I am also a board member of the Friends of the Villa Park Library. I will relate to you the majority opinion of the Friends of the Villa Park Library. We analyzed possible involvement or non-involvement in the sale of fireworks in Villa Park. And I want to run you through some numbers. We were told that the gross sales, according to the distributor, would be $80,000. Now, if there's four organizations that's going to participate in that, and the cost of the fireworks, the gross sales, excuse me, the cost of sales is 50 percent, $80,000 automatically comes down to $40,000. Now, if there's four groups in there, and we share it, that's gross income of $10,000. But there's also expenses, an insurance policy. The insurance policy costs $1,000 for, we're told, $1 million coverage. And it reads, "We are joined with the city of Villa Park." God forbid a house burns, a child gets injured, the Friends of the Library are drawn into with the city of Villa Park. Now, if one house burns, there goes $1 million, so we said, "Oh, we better up the money to $5 million, because the homes around that one are going to burn too." So, a $5 million policy, let's say, costs $2,000. So, instead of $10,000, we're down to $8,000. But wait a minute, you have to have 24-hour security there. What's the tab for security? I don't know. We were never told. Let's say it's $500. Let's say it's $1,000. Now, we're at 10 minus 2 minus 1, we're down to 7. When the vote was over, they got on with it and they went on their way. You have, in this procedure, a fallback position. You're going to listen, try this for one year, then you're going to go back and you're going to look at it. I urge you, get this stuff out of the way, go forward with it, and have an open mind to look into whether or not it's a good or bad thing to do. I would also urge these people who are here, who are willing with their threats, to try very much to open their minds, observe what happens over the Fourth of July week, take notes, get blue facts, and maybe they'll persevere. I don't know. I honestly don't know whether this is a good idea or a bad idea, but I know it's a bad idea to try to destroy the methods that we have in this city which have helped us for 50 years and to go on and go back and try to second guess all of a sudden. Thank you.
I'm Mary Salzow, 1-8202, Montana Circle, Villa Park. I'm here to speak, as I have before, about the fact that I assisted years ago with the Villa Park Band Booster Sale fireworks in the late 1970s and early 80s. I also served on the Orange County Grand Jury and respect the findings of the 2007, 2008 Grand Jury. I'm going to touch on some of the summary points from that, and I have made some copies if some of you would like to pick them up. The Grand Jury findings are that they recommended the sale of legal fireworks be discontinued and that our cities take a more active role in encouraging community nonprofit groups to fund other sources of funding for their organizations. The 2007 review found that safety officials were unanimous in their opinion that the sale of legal fireworks should be banned. Three, their use contributes to the injury of persons, usually children, and the destruction of private and public property. These are not my opinions, these are taken verbatim from the Grand Jury report, I want to assure you. Legal fireworks mask the use of illegal fireworks in the community and often contribute to the disruption of public order. Police officials believe that they could significantly reduce the usage of illegal fireworks if the sale of legal fireworks were banned. Five, the Grand Jury found that city and safety officials are unable to enforce some municipal ordinances due to the sheer volume of illegal activity. Safety officials stated that roving gangs come from as far away as San Diego to ignite illegal fireworks in the five Orange County cities which permit the sale and discharge of fireworks. Animal country officers see a dramatic spike in calls because of an increase in runaway animals, particularly dogs. Safety officials in the cities authorizing nonprofits to sell fireworks unanimously stated that the sale of legal fireworks significantly impacts their cities. Nine, cities that are bordered by neighboring cities where any fireworks are illegal find the impact on their law enforcement. I understand many of you who like the idea, which I have in fact experienced, of a wonderful family celebration on my friendly cul-de-sac in Villa Park, which were tried in the late 70s or early 80s when our children were middle school age. The idea was all of us would bring our food out and we would gather on the cul-de-sac and we'd supervise our kids having safe and sane fireworks and it would be a wonderful old-fashioned Fourth of July celebration like we enjoyed. We got started, and about the time we all got out there with our children, someone was clearly from out of the city, came in in a carload, pulled up at the end of the cul-de-sac, jumped out at the dead end of Center, and began throwing lighted firecrackers into the middle of our celebration. We quickly grabbed our kids, ran back in our houses, and thanked God that we were in our houses instead of taking our kids to the hospital. And I think as responsible adults, we have to accept the fact that these days there's a lot of difference between the ideal and the real, and we are responsible for seeing to it, that we uphold the real and the reality. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jack Cleary. I live at 1-8352, Serra Villa Drive in Villa Park. I am also a board member of the Friends of the Villa Park Library. I will relate to you the majority opinion of the Friends of the Villa Park Library. We analyzed possible involvement or non-involvement in the sale of fireworks in Villa Park. And I want to run you through some numbers. We were told that the gross sales, according to the distributor, would be $80,000. Now, if there's four organizations that's going to participate in that, and the cost of the fireworks, the gross sales, excuse me, the cost of sales is 50%, $80,000 automatically comes down to $40,000. Now, if there's four groups in there and we share it, that's gross income of $10,000. But there's also expenses, an insurance policy. The insurance policy costs $1,000 for, we're told, $1 million coverage. And it reads, "We are joined with the City of Villa Park." God forbid a house burns, a child gets injured, the Friends of the Library are drawn into with the City of Villa Park. Now, if one house burns, there goes $1 million, so we said, "Oh, we better up the money to $5 million because the homes around that one are going to burn too." So, a $5 million policy, let's say, costs $2,000. So, instead of $10,000, we're down to $8,000. But wait a minute, you have to have 24-hour security there. What's the tab for security? I don't know, we were never told. Let's say it's $500. Let's say it's $1,000. Now, we're at 10, minus 2, minus 1, we're down to 7. And then we figure it out, to run a booth is going to involve 36 hours of manpower. We are a small group. We can't afford 36 hours of manpower. So, when you figure it all out, for $7,000, we don't need that liability. The Friends of the Villa Park Library have successfully run 5K events with hundreds of people. No injuries, no lawsuits. We make darn sure that everything is done right. So, on that premise, we have rejected any participation in the fireworks sale. You know, I was in the Air Force, and something went wrong, or we didn't like something, and the mission wasn't going to take place, we had an expression: "This puppy is not going to fly." City council members, this one isn't going to fly either. Thank you.
One second, please. Mr. City Attorney, could you elaborate on the liability for the city? Because that might help other people just to hear your comments on that.
Sure. Well, saving same fireworks are allowed throughout California, they're legal. It's a city decision whether to trigger or not trigger their allowance within the city. As a law, the city has general immunity from any lawsuits. So, someone could sue us, but we file a, something called a demur and get out of the lawsuit very quickly, so. It's not a liability issue, it's a public policy issue.
Thank you.
Now that you've brought that up, I guess you're going to address this. There are some fireworks representatives here. I think the fireworks organizations are posting a $20 million policy at their expense, but I don't want to say that because I don't have firsthand knowledge, but they're here, maybe they could address that.
Why don't we let the speaker go, and then I'd like to ask one of the firework companies to come up and tell us about that next.
I'm Susan Weber, and I live at 1-7882 Bishop Circle. My house backs right up to Villa Park High School, and I mean, I'm really close to the fence. And every year, you know why we don't allow fireworks? I have it every year. They're shooting them off. And I agree, I love fireworks too, but there's so much danger from outside. If we're the only city that has fireworks, that means everybody from Orange and everywhere else is going to come in our city and start doing fireworks. Is that right or wrong? And I just don't want to take the chance, you know?
There are many cities in Orange County that allow fireworks. Fullerton's the closest one to us.
Well, Orange isn't, I mean, Orange is right next door. And I have problems with it every day about it being legal. And I don't worry because one of those hits my roof. I've seen them go up in the back.
Those are illegal.
And I could get, my house will get on fire, and then what? You know? I just don't think it's a good idea. And I have grandchildren, I'd love to have them see fireworks, I'd like them to hold the sparklers, but it's not worth it.
They outlaw sparklers, by the way.
We can go to a lot of parks and watch the fireworks. There's a lot of parks that have fireworks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Bob, I'd like to have one of the fireworks companies.
Want me to wait?
No, go ahead, you can.
Get my voice turned around here. As most of you know, I was a council member for many years, I was a mayor for three over terms. I was also a volunteer fire chief for many, many years. And I've been involved with fireworks in different agencies. I congratulate the council, all five of you, for your courage in this issue, because you're getting both sides over, as you can see. I'm in favor of the fireworks. I think it's a wonderful way for the youth to make some money. The Chicken Little story that you may remember about Chicken Little getting hit on the head by an acorn and running around the barnyard screaming, "The sky's falling." Sky didn't fall. The sky isn't going to fall because of our legal fireworks here either, because you've set aside, the Fourth of July is the only day you can use these, you can sell them prior to that. The penalties are going to be stiff if you violate it. It's a great American cause. We look at Washington DC, we look at Sacramento, we're losing freedoms every day. Patriotism, freedom, the ability to function properly is why we're here, and I again support you for it, and I hope we're able to continue with it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, my name is Jeff Blenenberg, and I represent Phantom Fireworks for the Southern California region. And I really wanted a representation from the vendor standpoint on the insurance liability.
Sure. Yeah, please.
Both vendors would offer a $20 million policy, some multiple occurrence there, and would name the city, its employees, volunteers, members, the charities, the landowners involved. So, there is coverage. But it's kind of interesting that I hear there were some fireworks here already, but I see the town still standing. San Ana, Garden Grav, a lot of cities have had fireworks, Safe and Sane. Most of the issues we find are with the illegals, that's what you don't want. They're there regardless. And I see cities like Westminster that opened up recently, you know, now Fullerton, you have Gardena in 99. A lot of cities that did a lot of fireworks because they thought they saw some issues out there and realized they were illegals that had the potential to fly up a roof. Safe and Sane item will not fly that high, will not go off, you know, certain radius. The state fire marshal has tested to prove every item that is quote Safe and Sane that is permitted to be sold.
What is that?
You can go up to about a 3-foot circle, 10-foot height, so it gives you an idea of county in that ballpark. You know, Gardena, Westminster, these areas said, you know, "We still have the issue of cleanup, we still have the issue of these fireworks illegals, even Safe and Sane coming over. We're just going to permit it, let the charities raise money." And we still are standing today. The best example I can give you is, sitting in here, I see a lot of similarities of what happened in Huntington Beach last year. The council voted to permit fireworks after about a 25-year ban. And people were going out of town to get them, they wanted to be able to celebrate in their town. People were bringing them back and they dealt with it anyways. And we heard the town's going to blow up, the houses are going to burn down. And I can tell you that they have 193,000 people in that city, a lot more potential for problems, a lot more stands were permitted, 10 stands. They have an additional issue of a half a million people coming from Australia, other countries, as well as within the state of California, to enjoy their July 4th big fireworks show they're known for. Half a million people are knowing when they're coming in, they're going to buy fireworks, it's going to go crazy. There were less fireworks related calls to the police department with the Safe and Sane fireworks than the prior years. There was one issue of fireworks that was a problem for them, and that was an illegal item. There were nearly $100,000, almost a million in the city of fireworks, moved through that town, ignited over four days, and one issue and that's illegal. You don't see those people coming to the council meeting now with problems. So, I think there's a lot of lack of education and experience and a failure of something new and change, but I really think you should all set in confidence that it's been tested and very nearby tested with a lot more potential for bigger issues in those cities. And these issues just don't exist with this product. It's the illegals that is the problem.
Can we ask questions of this man, or no?
Yeah, the problem with that is we probably would be here all night.
Just one question.
One question.
Okay.
Fireway.
When you say you tested it, like, for example, we have a lot of eucalyptus trees in Villa Park, pine trees that are mature, you know, strawberry. Have you tested that where like a piccolo peat or a sparkler that's just burned out will fall onto a eucalyptus leaf or something on the ground, and what happens? Or when you say testing, what do you mean?
Yeah, tested is the state fire marshal. We go all the way to China, some of the products are imported, both companies have stringent testing and approval processes, third-party consumer testing before it even hits this country. And then it goes up to the state fire marshal's office, and they test everyone of their items, TNT fireworks, Phantom fireworks items, and they make sure that these items have a stability from holding the wick. They have a multi-part testing, that the fumes, when you light it, has to last so many seconds before it's approved, that it doesn't have a tip factor. And just to give you an example, this is the most stringent testing in pretty much, I would say, wouldn't you, Rick or John, across the US of some states. State of Arizona opened up a couple of years ago and had the same fear, we're dry, these fireworks are coming in. They allow more elaborate fireworks than what are being asked to be permitted here, and the state's still standing and there hasn't been issues. Again, those issues are with those unsteady flight patterns of aerial fireworks and stuff that unfortunately is there whether we want them there or not.
If you're a citizen, you have to wait in the back room if you're a citizen. Let me ask you one simple question. You'd even.
Hey, Bill.
Bill.
A barn. Okay, so.
Can I just say that I'm not worried about the fireworks standing still, I'm worried about people coming and throwing them out the window of a lemon where there's no.
I think that that's getting into an area, as the city attorney would agree, but we can pretty much sit here and say, "What if?" all day long. What if I went into Ralph's and grabbed a lighter and went over to another display of paper, leaves of paper and lit them? Well, that's a problem. That potential exists with any element that's out there and a lot of products. So, I think that's them going from the testing more to what ifs that, in all fairness, we could be there all day talking about the what ifs of a lot of products right now in town, so.
Thank you very much. Let's move on, guys.
This is going to be really short. This is going to be really short. My son was eligible to get his driver's license in January. I'm not letting him because it's dangerous. I'd vote for fireworks because I think it would be a great experience for families to be together, for kids to learn with their parents how to do this. My son has to get his Eagle before he's allowed to drive. We all drive cars, it's probably a lot more dangerous than we're talking about with fireworks. And I believe in personal responsibility, and I believe to pass that on to your kids, you have to do things with them and explain things to them. So, anyway, that's all I want to say. I just am baffled at this.
Hello again, Councilor Roger Fitchin, 1-7861, Lincoln Street, Villa Park. Born and raised in Villa Park, 1948, I believe it was, so been around here for a while. Retired last year from the City of Orange Fire Department, 41 years as a firefighter. I have a few other things I forgot about last week and something, some information I've come across after we just talked about Huntington Beach that's a little more pertinent to that. We saw the Orange County Fire Authority's statistics, I think you must have seen, for injuries across a 10-year span of 82 to 92 that showed the correlation of cities banning the use of fireworks and the dramatic drop of fireworks caused fires and injuries. The 2000-2008 Orange County Grand Jury findings, which I see we have printed out here in the back, the use of legal fireworks is greater in cities that allow the sale of legal fireworks. The use of legal fireworks can mask the use of illegal fireworks per the Grand Jury. Last year, Huntington Beach, 2012, experienced a significant increase in the visible use of dangerous fireworks after there had been a steady decline in dangerous firework activity over the preceding several years. In 2012, on Huntington Beach, they confiscated a total of 165 pounds of dangerous fireworks. This was gleaned from the after-action report, July 4th, 2012, from the Police, Fire and Public Works, reported to the Huntington Beach City Council. In comparison, 25 pounds of dangerous fireworks and 19 pounds of Safe and Sane fireworks were confiscated in 2011 when sales were still not allowed. That's a 765% increase in dangerous fireworks confiscations last year. In Huntington Beach again last year, they had over 100 calls for police service waiting to be dispatched on the evening of July 4th, but no officers were available. Of those calls, 100 were citizens' complaints of fireworks, both state-approved and illegal. Police received complaints from residents expressing frustration about the amount of fireworks being used in their neighborhoods and that no police responded. I'm sure many residents believe it futile to call at that time with so many fireworks being discharged within the city. The public works, street sweepers, collected six yards of debris from the city's center line where the fireworks were being shot off, and that weighed approximately two tons. This is a city that's a little bit larger than Villa Park. Many children were seen walking down Pacific Coast Highway holding state-approved fireworks that were ignited again in Huntington Beach last year. Huntington Beach neighbors an ocean. We neighbor a very high fire hazard severity zone per Cal Fire, Orange County Fire. I think it's a roll of the dice and a gamble to see if we can avert danger. At the very least, legal sale, what as Councilman Member Barnett said, "Bring all the people out of the backyards with their legal and illegal fireworks, settlements with their cocktails onto the streets for open warfare." Legalizing Safe and Sane will give the impression of abetting the use of dangerous fireworks as well. It's pretty much been nice around here on the 4th, and I've noticed that less illegal fireworks have been used over the preceding years. So, I'm asking you, pleased to reconsider your vote on this, and let's celebrate, get together, have fun, not so violently, I don't think that's Villa Park way. And by the way, Boston, Philadelphia, New York don't allow fireworks, and those are seats of our government. Thank you.
My name is James Brown, I live at 1-8552 Mendezville. First of all, I'd like to ask Jared to turn up the air conditioning. Two, three people are dizzy back here. It's really bad in here. If you could do that, it would help. You know, I did two or three surveys around Villa Park and collected signatures, which Trevor Bala has, some of them. And I ran into three doctors that live here in Villa Park, and each one of them signed it, their wife signed it, and they said, "God forbid we have fireworks." They all work at a hospital, and he says, all of them said the same thing, "The amount of emergency we have on the 4th is terrible." And the people that speak for them, that's great, and the people that speak against them, that's great. And that is democracy. But whether we have a $20 million liability by the fireworks people, it will not replace one eye, or one finger, or one injury that takes place. The money doesn't mean anything when it comes to an injury. My daughter is a physical therapist at Kaiser. She's a master degree physical therapist, and she says, "Dad, it's insane to allow that." I am treating kids now with physical therapy that got injured by Safe and Sane fireworks. And it's no excuse to have fireworks just because we say, "Well, we've got them anyway." That's wrong. We should enforce it a little better, yes. And mainly is that we're a little bit too fair. Instead of like that little girl said, we should be more just. We tend to not ticket people for doing something that's illegal. We kind of allow it and promote it. We should, I'd be willing to pay two or three more policemen to go around and ticket people that's doing fireworks in Villa Park if we have no fireworks. Several people that I talked to, maybe I'm more elderly people, they had grandchildren and children, and they said, "Mr. Brown, I have a daughter or a granddaughter that was injured by fireworks. Please stop this." And I said, "Please come to the meeting." And many of these people are not the kind of people that come in here like Rick talks a lot or I talk a lot. They don't want to do that. They don't come out of their house, but they're very much against it. And they said, "Please, please try to convince the city council to rescind this ruling." And I think you will find the majority of the people in Villa Park are against it, and that's democracy. The question came up in regards to, I think one of the gentlemen said that it's a problem if we don't allow fireworks because it's the Fourth of July, I forget how he said it, because it's the celebration and all this. You know, there's many places around here, Disneyland especially, Angel Stadium, that have the most powerful fireworks display in the world. And that's the kind of fireworks to have the kids see, not these little things that can cause harm to them. For example.
James, can you kind of wrap it up, please?
One of the kids that my daughter said the doctor is treating in the hospital, these little things, I think they call them worms, they're a little black thing that you light it and it kind of curls up, treating for respiratory problems, the fumes from that particular device. So, Safe and Sane, the main thing is, I think some lady last meeting said there was over 9,000 children injured by fireworks on the Fourth of July in the last year or so. And so, if we can prevent one, God bless us.
Thank you.
You know, if I may jump in, to the speakers at the podium, can you watch out for the microphone that's on the flat desktop there? We're getting some squirrel and feedback, I'm hearing from some folks in the community.
Roger Brown, 1-8551, Rose Mill Drive. And I want to make a call, I'm about to say, I'm not inferring that anything was done illegal. I know this was done all illegal, but this is kind of a statement with the Bagley King.
"The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." And I know this was put on the agenda, but it flew under the radar. I mean, the people that I've talked to in this city, most of them didn't know about it until it was already approved. So I'd like to suggest that we come up with a system here in Villa Park where the residents who want to be put onto an email list that the city could broadcast to all the people on that list at one time, the agenda of the city council. And that way, you, you know, I read my emails, but I don't go in and read what's going on in the city of Villa Park all the time. Occasionally, I do, but I don't do it on a regular basis. So that's why it flew under my radar, and it only suggests, no matter how this comes out tonight, I think we could come up with a system to keep the residents better informed. And then we wouldn't have this kind of a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Just real quick to respond to that, I'm going to ask our city manager to describe our communication methods that we have with our citizens. Jared, could you please elaborate on that?
Sure, yeah. Mr. Brown just spoke of a good point via electronic communication. We have what we dub as our e-network in place right now. Currently, there's about eight hundred emails on this list, and we'll send out weekly, maybe bi-weekly emails with hot topics. Fireworks, school traffic, when that was a hot issue, the very high fire hazard severity zones, when that was around. So we do go above, in my opinion, above and beyond our legally required noticing requirements, which is just one-quarter inch advertisement in the back of the Orange City News, which ran for the benefit of the audience on February fourteenth. It was published there, it was on the website, it was on the e-network several times, in the scanned section of the Orange City News, and posted here in the city clerk's office. So we already have that system in place. If you navigate to www.villapark.org, on the top right-hand corner, you can enter in your email address, your first name, your last name, and you're on that list.
Thank you, Jared. We, we've had that system for many, many, many years, by the way, as well.
I don't think many people know about it. I didn't know about it.
Well, now you do. That's the good thing. Yeah, well, I understand. Well, that's why the other methods he mentioned are available as well, because we understand that. Thank you. Okay, next.
Good evening, members of the city council. John Kelly, 555-North Gilbert in Fullerton, California. Here this evening on behalf of TNT Fireworks, one of the wholesalers. I've been a part of these discussions since January, when it was first introduced. Couple of observations here. We've heard a lot of discussion about the grand jury. There's a handout there this evening. There were in fact nine recommendations when that oh-seven, oh-eight report came out, the ninth of which, and I'll read it, "Decline moratorium of fireworks sales at least three or more consecutive years in the cities of Buena Park, Costa Mesa, Garden Grove, Santa Ana, and Stanton to allow law enforcement and fire officials in these cities the opportunity to curb the escalating use of illegal fireworks activity." I'd like to share with you some responses from that. From the city of Buena Park, Mayor Jim Dow, "This recommendation will not be implemented because it is not reasonable." From the city of Costa Mesa, then Mayor Eric Bever, "This recommendation will not be implemented because it is not warranted. There is no evidence of correlation between a three-year time period and the ability to significantly curb, quote, 'the use of illegal fireworks.'" From Garden Grove, former Mayor Bill Dalton, "This recommendation will not be implemented because it is not reasonable. There is no evidence of correlation between a three-year time period and significantly reducing illegal." From Mayor Ethan's in Stanton's, "The city of Stanton will not be implementing this recommendation since it lacks reasonableness in that no nexus can be shown." David Rain, the city manager from Santa Ana, "Also, this recommendation will not be implemented because it is not warranted." So the five cities that it was directed to, not one of the cities yielded to, to recommendation number nine. So I want to share just a couple of observations. I was here at the meeting last week, and there was one comment that struck me. The mayor made a comment about his experience as a volunteer firefighter within the city for a period of, I think, as you said, twenty-four years, mayor. And there was a lot of booing and catcalling going back and forth when some comments were made. But one comment that was made was that, "I've been here for twenty-four years. We have fireworks now. We simply seek to regulate it, get people out of their backyards and out into, out into their front yards and out into the streets." And the whole room went quiet, absolutely quiet. It was even mentioned here this evening by some people testifying against fireworks that, you know, this is a family celebration. It's the one time of year where we get out in our cul-de-sacs with our neighbors and talk with them for, for a celebratory type of thing. And I'll leave you with this, over thirty cities since nineteen ninety-two have taken the course that Villa Park is considering here this evening, and that is by council vote to bring the sale of fireworks into their communities. Two have banned in nineteen ninety, both here in Orange County, Westminster and Fullerton, and by popular vote, sixty percent, they brought their fireworks back. So I would encourage, and obviously we support the sale of fireworks. We're committed to a lot of education that obviously has to take place here. I'm even hearing a lot of misunderstandings about the product that we distribute and the product which is illegal in California, and in some cases illegal federally. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly. I have a question.
We need to know about Stanton and Villa Park.
I have a question for Mr. Kelly, please. Please. I have a question for Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, real quick, go ahead.
You said thirty cities allow fireworks. Are those all in Orange County?
No, it's California.
Okay. Of the thirty-four cities in Orange County, how many currently permit that?
Depending on the action tonight, there are nine.
Okay. We would be the ninth. And what about the unincorporated areas that are close to us? Do they permit the use of fireworks?
They do not in Orange County.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Lisa Corbett. My address is thirty-three forty East Collins, Orange. I'm a resident of the city of Orange and a former resident of Villa Park. The reasons in favor of allowing the sale and use of fireworks in this city of Villa Park are, number one, allowing the discharge of safe and sane fireworks on streets as safer than in backyards where there's a greater likelihood of igniting shrubbery. Residents are already discharging fireworks in backyards. Let them do it legally in front of their homes instead of illegally in their backyards. Number two, allowing residents to exercise their right to the enjoyment of safe and sane fireworks in their city. Number three, the sale of fireworks generates revenue for school and other nonprofit programs within the city. School programs such as music, science, dance, and sports are made possible through fundraising and contribute to our community as a whole. Villa Park High School has just achieved the distinguished school designation. This prestigious honor benefits all residents of the city, whether they have school-aged children or not. For example, property values are greatly impacted by the quality of its schools and the programs that are offered at those schools. Number four, fireworks sales generate sales tax revenue for the city general fund. Why let the sales tax revenue go to other municipalities when it can benefit the city directly? And lastly, today's safe and sane fireworks are safer than previous versions that were available prior to the nineteen eighties citywide ban. Also, today's roofing materials in play are much safer than they were prior to nineteen eighty-eight. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question based on that. Lisa brought up something new that we haven't heard before. Will we be receiving sales tax revenue based on what's being sold?
Yes, will we receive a small portion of that, and frankly, I haven't looked into it because it's not a driving factor. I don't know that, what is that?
A fraction of.
Eight percent here in the county right now, maybe?
Okay.
A fraction of that.
Good evening. I'm Rich Feskey. I live on Fayon Drive in Villa Park. As you know, I was a member of this group for twelve years. I was married two times, and I also attempted to get fireworks in. Excuse me. The issue here is, is not whether to allow state fireworks to be sold, I'm sorry, the issue here is to allow state fireworks to be sold for four days. It's only a trial, and I'm in favor of that trial. Prior to nineteen eighty-seven, fireworks sales were legal in Villa Park. And in November of nineteen eighty-seven, the city adopted a uniform fire code, and the uniform fire code says fireworks are illegal. But the state of California allows certified fireworks. These fireworks are called safe and sane. They are registered by the state fire marshal, and they have a state seal on them. Now, these are spinners and fountains and smoke items. These are not big rockets. They're not cherry bombs and things like that. Now, one of the issues that is frequently cited by the army fireworks minority is a number of people that lose their fingers and their hands to fireworks. The reality is that all of those types of devices were banned. They were banned under federal law with the Child Protection Act of nineteen sixty-eight, and they carried felony charges and a prison term, a ten-year prison term. We're talking here about California safe certified fireworks. My estimate, oh, by the way, the extent of legal fireworks in California, over two-hundred-and-ninety cities permit them, over sixty cities in Southern California, and eight cities in Orange County. My estimate, derived from conversations with council members of two other cities, also talking with a manufacturer, tells me that if we had two stands in Villa Park, we could possibly generate sales of a hundred thousand dollars, and that would give a profit of thirty-five thousand. But let's forget about that and just talk about the average. The average sales per stand is thirty-four thousand dollars, and that yields twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty. Now, those numbers are from two thousand and six. Now, maybe the charities don't want it, but I've got to tell you, I'm tired of having people always begging for money. I'm tired of stale cookies and candy that fill my garage. I'm tired of all the junk I've got to buy for my grandchildren because they're pushing something. So these charities, if they don't want the money, fine. They don't have to take it. The vast majority of Americans, more than eighty percent, heed the words of John Adams, who said, "The Fourth of July holiday should," and here we go, "ought to be celebrated by pomp and parade with shows, games, sports, guns, bells, bonfires, and illumination from one end of the continent to the other." Look, life carries risks, and freedom is a necessary component of good life. We won't stop people from fishing because we're afraid they'll drown. We won't permit kids from riding bikes because kids get killed on bikes. The injury rates for fireworks do not support an all-out ban on their sale in Villa Park. How much more freedom should be expected to satisfy, to sacrifice to this city council, to the government, to anyone? We need our freedom back, and, and this is an enrichment of our freedom. When you allow this city to say, "No, you can't have them," when the state says you can have them.
Can you wrap it up, Rich, please?
Yep. Government should limit the intrusion into our lives as much as possible, and I could argue that government does have the responsibility to pass laws, but this doesn't rise to that occasion. So let's try this for a four-day period. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
My name's Mike Mundia, 1-0536, Beardsley Circle in Villa Park. And I got to tell you, this is kind of a, this is a lot better meeting tonight than it was last week...
Yes.
...when I was the only one that got up in, in favor of it. So thank you all very much for coming out, those that are in favor of trying this, for a while. Excuse me?
I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I don't know what else to say here other than that I think that you, you as a city council started out with this in January. You voted five to zero in favor of proceeding with this. You came back in February with a four to one vote after a first reading. You came back in March with a three to two vote, still in favor of trying this. I, I do believe inside with the other folks here that have mentioned, I, I just, you, you owe it to this city and these service groups to give this a try. Let them try it. You know, they might realize, because I have done this, they might realize after this year that the effort that they put into this, as I believe the Villa Park Library gentleman mentioned, that the effort is, forget it, we don't want anything to do with this ever again. But give them a try. Let them try it. Don't, please, 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 don't let these people, this very small group of people that are sitting here that are opposed to this...
Let the man talk, please.
Run the decision of this city. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Melinda Masters, and I live on Beckley Circle in Villa Park, and I do agree with personal safety. We, you know, everybody has their choice to be safe or sane in anything we do, just like they said, fishing, whatever. There are dangers in absolutely everything. The one thing I love about Villa Park is the community feel, and this is going to help our community feel. We get to sell fireworks. We get to put them on our streets, because every year since I've lived in Villa Park, they've been in someone's backyard by my house as well. And these are legalizing them, and these are putting safe and sane on the street. But as well, I've also had them on my street where other people have brought them in from other cities to do them in there in front of the houses in Villa Park. They're safe, they're sane, I'm not worried. I grew up doing fireworks. I am the PFSO president at Villa Park High. We can find, we can fill every single booth. If no other service group wants it, we will fill it because we have needs and demands. We are not worried. I will be the one helping to get volunteers. We are not concerned about having people sleep there. We have so many needs in our community, and this will benefit sports and dance and band and football. Every organization needs this, and it's going to be fun to work side by side. We are Villa Park. We are a great community. I hate to see this divide us. It is safe. It is sane, or they would not be sold. They would not be sold. They would not give us the insurance policies if they were not sure of that. We are safe. We are sane. Our high school needs it, our elementary schools need it, our middle schools need it. Please come together and join as a community and try it for one year since they voted it in. Let us give a try. Thank you.
My name is Marian Lucero, better known as MJ. I guess my one question that I have not heard answered, and maybe I missed it, is what is the driving factor that brought back the consideration or even thinking of bringing fireworks back to the city of Villa Park? Was it money? What was that? And I, I would like to know that answer because I think it's very important to all of us here. What was the driving factor? Were we wine and dined? Was it the, holding out the caveat of huge amounts of money? Was it driven by our community coming forward and asking to have fireworks? So I'm asking this particular council to tell us what that reason was. Thank you.
Tom Dodge, 1-8221, Montana Circle, obviously here in Villa Park. First comment is, one, there is no such thing, and all due respect to the salesmen who are trying to make a living, there is no such thing as safe and sane fireworks by any standard. Two, as mentioned last week, and it has been confirmed since then, the explosive charge in the bombs in Boston were from, quote, "safe and sane fireworks." in the bombs in Boston were from, quote, "safe and sane fireworks." The two individuals went in, removed the powder, packed it into, and they bought it legally. They had to go to New Hampshire to get them, but that's been confirmed. Another point, too, you know, they talked, somebody talked about safe and sane fireworks covering or masking the sound of other fireworks. About five years ago, I was up on my roof to do some work, and I found a .38 bullet lodged in my shakes. Okay? It doesn't take that much to launch something, and matter of fact, I think I'm pretty well safe by the statute of limitations. I was about 10 years old when I learned how to modify supposedly safe and sane fireworks to do things they were not intended to do. And 10-year-old, all through high school, you know, even into college, people will modify them if they can get them. So, as you can tell, I'm not in favor of fireworks.
Thank you, Tom. Any other speakers?
Good evening. My name is Irene DeSantis, and I live on James Circle. I'm hoping that the council got the last letter that I sent you, that you could read it. And as you know, I've sent a letter before, and I've got petitions from my neighbors, all advising to rescind this proposition. And I've talked to them again, and James Road, James Circle, nobody is in favor of the fireworks. And believe me, there is not a minority of people who are in favor, who are not in favor of this. There is a majority of citizens in Villa Park who are definitely against fireworks for this, this small city. Imagine, this is a very dense little city, and you're talking about July, which is a hot, dry time of the year. We've had no rain. I mean, it could do all kinds of damage. So, hopefully, if you all read the letter, I hope that you all read the letter again because I'm telling you, the people on my street are not, are not for this at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Teri Almendorf, 10291 Camden Circle, obviously Villa Park. I've been back and forth on this since Rich Fruski first brought it up several years ago. There's pros and cons to it, and, and there are good argument on both sides. On Sunday, I did sign the petition that I think Mrs. Polly has now, and I'm going to, I think.
Did not sign a petition.
Okay, I signed, I did sign the petition that was going around the city.
Okay.
But what I'm asking now is that you please remove my name because I really don't like some of the way in which you council members have been spoken to tonight, and I don't want to be a part of that because I think that's wrong. I don't think you should be intimidated into making a vote, and quite frankly, recalls don't work in the city of Villa Park. I have a shake roof, okay? If you've ever gone by my house, my, my shake roof is very dry. It is just, it looks like a hot summer day could set it off. So, yes, having fireworks in this city worries me. However, every year, all my neighbors around me are shooting off fireworks, and the last couple of years, one of my neighbors had like a hibachi grill in the street, out in the street, with a flare shooting up, throwing things in a hibachi grill. Okay? That's illegal. You had the law last year that it's illegal. It was still done. You hear these firecrackers going off three or four days before the Fourth of July. It's still being done. And several years ago, someone's roof went up in flames, even though there was the law of no fireworks in the city of Villa Park. Back in the 80s and the 90s, we had a patrol on the Fourth of July, as you will remember because you were on the volunteer fire department. When we had a volunteer fire department, our volunteer firemen went around this city on the Fourth of July, patrolling, making sure people did not have fireworks and weren't shooting off fireworks. But somebody got rid of our volunteer fire department, and now we can't have that anymore because obviously it would cost too much to get the career guys out there patrolling our streets. The issue here, the issue here is enforcement. Doesn't matter what, I support you whatever you do, one way or the other. And I don't threaten you, and I will not be a part of anything that would threaten you to make a choice one way or the other. The issue here, though, is enforcement. And it doesn't matter if they're illegal or legal. People are gonna get the wrong thing. They're going to misuse it, just like with gun control. It doesn't matter. Some bad guy's gonna get it. Some bad guy's gonna misuse it. And enforcement is the issue here. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing, Mayor? Thank you. Since Ms. Almendorf did bring this up, I neglected to say this, but since you did bring it up about this petition that was circulated around the city. This petition that I found in my mailbox, as did the rest of my neighbors on my street, and in the mailbox, and it wasn't delivered by the mailman. Title 18 of our federal code says that you may not place items in a mail receptacle. The only people that can do that are mail carriers. Okay? So, I think that that's, that's bad. Not only that, counsel, but this petition also directed those that filled it out to send it back to Mr. Hildenbrand, and for him to be in control of them, or to take care of them. Either that or they may be taken to 18122 Gloria Circle. And I believe, Ms. Polly, is that your address?
Yes, it is my address.
Very good. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
One moment, please. I would like to respond to that because I believe that Mr. Medina is implying that I, I'm sorry, Mundia, is implying that I circulated that petition. I did not. I did not. There are residents.
You're running this.
Uh, I did not write any of that. But there are residents who.
Your address is on there.
Because there are residents who did not want to bring it to City Hall, and then there were others who wanted to bring it to City Hall.
All right. Thank you. Now, we have a speaker. If you want to speak, you can come up front.
Good evening, council. My name's Steve Charv. I'm the mayor of Stanton, and I was asked to come down here by my friend, the mayor. The reason that I'm here is I'm not, I'm not picking sides. I'm not, I'm not saying vote yes or vote no. I'm just here for a resource. I think in order for you to make the decision that you're gonna have to make, the more facts that you have before you, or the more questions that you have answered, you'll be able to do the wise thing. I'm also happy to see that my, the chief fire marshal, my best friend from the OCFA's here, I'm also on the board of the OCFA. So, you're gonna get a lot of great information from her because she is the one that runs the county's system. I'm here because I've had 28 years of experience with fireworks in the city of Stanton. We started back in 1988, and one of the reasons that we chose to do it was we tried to help the charities in our group with funding. As you know, with the tough economic times, it's been pretty good for us. As far as some of the concerns that people have, yes, you're going to have illegals as any city does. We didn't see an increased amount of illegal fireworks in our city when we opened up way back when, and we've never seen an increase. However, you're gonna have those, our neighboring Cypress shoots off more bottle rockets than we do in our city, and you always are gonna have that problem no matter what you try to do. As far as property damage goes, I was, I got the reports from OCFA, and last year, there were, in this, and out of the 36 jurisdictions, which include Monarch Bay and the unincorporated areas, there were basically three cities that had property damage. Two of those were from bottle rockets. You will find that most of the injuries to individuals and most of the injuries that are going on are caused by illegal fireworks. That's why in our city, we have a $1,000 fine that we were able to cite people with. We closed down our city parks at dusk, turned the water sprinklers on, and we don't allow people from the outside to come in in our residential areas. It's pretty much self-policing. It works pretty well. There's four things I'm gonna leave you with for you to be successful on the Fourth of July. Number one, we have to have good regulations, and I've taken a look at some of the ones that you have. They're very similar to ours. Number two, you do need enforcement. We use our credit enforcement more than we do our police. And probably the most important is up to the people that you contract with, your vendors. They need to educate your kids in the schools. And the companies that are here do a very good job doing that. One of the other things, when you do talk about injuries, there were 19 last year in the county. Of those, 10 were adults, and three of them were kids under three, and all of them were with illegal fireworks. You know, I, it's been very successful in our community. I knock on wood. I checked with the fire department the next morning on the 5th, when my street sweepers are wrapping up my streets because, you know, I don't want to leave a mess there. But this worked for us. Whether it works for you or not, that's a decision you have to make. But if anybody had any direct questions for me, Brian, I'm glad I don't see a repair, but I'm glad I came to help you if I can, you know, let you know, let you know what's going on out in the, in some of the other communities.
Yeah. Any questions for the mayor?
Okay. Thank you very much, and good luck then.
I'm Laura Brown, and I'm your fire marshal. And just wanted to give you a few facts. This is always a divisive issue, no matter where we, we see it come before our council or before the public for a vote. And just as a little bit of background, first of all, I have a strong affection for this city, too. I started my career here 28 years ago as a paid call firefighter, and we did used to patrol. And it's stuck with me, although I chose a career in fire prevention rather than, so I've kind of concentrated there. But when we started having fireworks and really looked at all of the danger and terms of losses, of injury rates and property loss, and the millions of dollars, it was really a banner year in 1986 when things, you know, in those days, 2.5 million in property loss was a lot for a single year in fire. It doesn't sound like a lot in today's dollars, but it was then, and the number of injuries we had was growing every year. And so, the grand jury in 87 wrote a report and asked all of the fire agencies to band together and along with other public safety agencies and try to ban them. And we were fairly successful, and in 1988, the first year after the ban, there were only eight cities left that had fireworks. There was a 21% decrease in the number of fire-related incidents, and injuries went to zero in the cities that didn't have fireworks. And in, by 1992, there were only four cities left, and 60% of the incidents were in those four cities. It's decreased ever since, although it's starting to creep back because I think we've become a victim of our own success. It's much like putting in, having a dangerous intersection, a lot of traffic accidents. You put in a stoplight, you don't have the accidents anymore, so you take out the stoplight. And there's no doubt in my mind that we will see the injury and incident rate increase. We do have a lot more illegal fireworks in the cities that have, that, two cities that we serve, now three, have a lot more illegal. We collect the fireworks. We try to dispose of them. Last year, it took the state, they're mandated to pick them up for us. They're having disposal issues at the state. It's a hazardous waste now. It's $10 a pound to dispose of it. We kept it on our property until early this year from last July 4th. The state is still stockpiling it. It costs them over $300,000 in disposal costs and almost $1 million in total costs for staffing, collection from each of our counties. So, it's a growing problem environmentally and not, you know, our main focus as your fire departments is public safety, fires, injuries. But we have to all be concerned, too, and it's part of our, our problem to try to figure out how to store them. They're not safe to store in a fire station. They're not safe to store on our property. There is no place to dispose of them in the state of California of hazardous waste. They all have to be shipped out of state. So, we're having that growing issue. So, again, victim of our own success, we have, last time I was here speaking, it was the very fire, very high fire hazards, very zone, I even have trouble saying that. Regardless if you agreed with the maps or not, your topography, vegetation, climate, and weather conditions, as well as your fire history, supports the fact that you are a high fire hazard area. That's why the city council unanimously made the whole city a special fire protection area with the most restrictive requirements for building homes and managing vegetation of anywhere else. With the ban that we currently have on fireworks, fireworks are the fourth leading cause of wildfire in this county, just in our jurisdiction. And that's with only a few cities allowing it. So, that is something that everybody has to be aware of just on the factual basis, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Hi. My name is Tammy Mundia, and I live at 10536 Beardsley Circle. Excuse me, I'm kind of nervous. I don't normally get up and do this kind of stuff. But it's just to pertain to what my husband was talking about earlier in regards to the petitions that went around our neighborhood. I think, and I'm sure that you guys saw that, there were several complaints in regards to that because our sweet darling neighbors who live next door to us, he was very upset because it was put in his mailbox folded like this, on top of his outgoing mail, his mail did not get picked up. And I don't think that's right. I mean, I just, I feel like, you know what? If the petitions are out there, fine, but I don't think they should be put in our mailbox. I don't like the fact that they were, I don't want to say pushed, but they were definitely kind of put on the face at the home tour on, over the weekend, which I thought was wrong. I just, I don't feel that that's the right thing to do. So, anyway, I hope that we can go forward with this and give it a try for a year. Give us, give us some responsibility. We'll do fine, I promise.
Hi. I'm Marcy Roney at 18492 Jacquetal, and I wasn't gonna speak, but I think I need to represent my street. I walked between Center and Lemon all the way through Jacquetal, and people were grabbing the petition out of my hand, saying it's gonna just, it's gonna be just like Halloween on our street. And they feel that Halloween, you guys may not have that same situation that we do, but Halloween is a nightmare on Jacquetal. It is no longer fun. It is, you know, people in our street, almost every person, that I'm not trying to be a killjoy, almost every person on our street is going black next year because what happened when, you know, over the years since I moved there in 2001, is that our reputation as a city, the hidden jewel, starts to get out to outlying areas, and we provide, you know, better candy, I don't know. But anyway, so they come in, they come in, and now it's to the, it's to the point where my, when, when the firework ordinance, when I found out it had passed, my first thing was not, oh, you know, oh, the fireworks that people already do in their house? That wasn't my concern at all because I know that people are gonna still do that, and that's not, I'm not worried about that. Because I think most people in Villa Park, most, I'm not saying all, you know, people have response, they're responsible, professional people that would monitor their children, hopefully, and teach their children, like someone said, how to hold a sparkler and all that. That's not what I'm worried about. I'm worried about someone coming in, like when we have it on Halloween, people, you cannot even get out of our driveways because we have, or inundated, we have over 550 trick-or-treaters, and I would say probably 99% do not live in Villa Park. It costs the average person on our street over $300 for candy, even when they try to not buy the most expensive thing. Anyway, so, when, and then the day after Halloween, it is a total disaster. They just come on the grass. They have, they don't have respect. And then I was talking to one person on our street who actually is very concerned about living on one of her, part of her house is a butts to lemon, and with the new walking path, which I've actually seen when I walk my dog there, I've seen dirty diapers, cigarette butts, galore. I mean, it's like, just, they just, people drive through and throw stuff along that street, and she is constantly picking that stuff up. So, a person who would dump a dirty diaper, I don't think that they really care, they don't have the same level of responsibility that someone, you know, that lives in Villa Park. I don't think it's someone, it could be someone living in Villa Park that throws a dirty diaper, but I don't think so. So, what I'm saying is, my big fear was like, oh, here we go, here we go. Let's bring everybody to the hidden jewel. You know, that's why I moved here because it was a hidden jewel. It was like off the radar, you know? I was in Manhattan Beach where there were parties, and there were sharkies, and there was all this stuff. And I moved, we moved here to get away from that, to get into a quiet, no sidewalks, so that we would have, you know, could raise our son in a safe environment. And it is not, it's not, it's, we've now had a couple major robberies and burglaries on our street. The guy who everyone knows on Center and Jacquetal in the corner who decorates with all the different decorations for Christmas and for Halloween, last Halloween, he had two or three of his decorations stolen. He's had Christmas decorations stolen. And so, what I was worried about is, okay, now we're gonna bring in all these people into our area, and maybe the first year, they won't know about it, and they'll be, okay, and then, we're, oh, gosh, I can't believe, so word of mouth, you know, I know I talked about, anyway, word of mouth catches on. People start coming into Villa Park to buy the fireworks, and I just, I, I don't know, like, to me, you know, I think there's. better ways to raise money, I'm not like, I'm not for not raising money for the schools, but I, I think there's safer, saner ways. And then really quick, I was at, I was at Home Depot, I ran into a woman who lives in Anamah Hills, and she told me, and I brought it up, because I, you know, we were talking, and she said the house, the house across the street from hers burnt down, completely burnt to the ground three years ago, and it was because of safe and sane, the kids are 15 and 16, they, and the house burnt down, her driveway, her car, all, you know, got burnt, anyway, so I'm saying that it can happen with, it can happen with a safe and sane. I don't, I kind of agree with the man who said that there is no such thing, because we are not in a community that, that, we're not by the beach or the water, the sand, we have eucalyptus and pine trees, and I, you know, and so I just don't want outlying people coming in and not respecting our city, that's all, and, and causing fire damage, and causing, you know, more violence, throwing, whoever said they threw fireworks at the kids, I don't, I don't want that. So anyway, that's it, thank you.
I may have had my turn to speak, but I would also remind council that the input that they got from the fire marshal and from our fire authorities here, and the input that we got from our, our police and our enforcement, none of those recommendations were for fireworks. There's no way to enforce this, we got one and a half guys, come on.
Boy, a lot of duplicate speakers here. Make it quick, we don't have time.
Okay. I agree with this lady to a degree, because I'm on the corner of Lemon and San Diego, and fireworks, I think, will be like Halloween, and that's why she was saying it. I probably get 500 people, too, and they line up on San Diego, the cars dropping the kids off, and I'd say, almost every one of them are outside the city. And I think the fireworks are going to do the same thing. The first year, we may not have it, but you got to think of this city from now on.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, any other speakers? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for comments.
Who wants to go first?
You want me to go? All right. Well, the thing that affected me most, when I've been listening to this for multiple days now, is the, is the allegation that, you know, you're not listening to the community, and the, and the, and the community should be involved, et cetera. So I did a couple of things. First of all, I walked, I can't, I don't have time, I have work, and I can't do the whole city, but I did walk my neighborhood, 32 houses over the weekend. And I knocked on every door, I tried to be completely independent as I could, and told people that I had to vote on this, that I wanted community input, not mine. I told them I wasn't going to tell you what my position was on it, and I wanted their position. And I didn't want them to be constrained, if they happened to thought they know my position, I want to please ignore it, tell them where they were at. So I walked around, I found out of the, there was 30, I think it was 32 houses, there was 11 people told me they wanted it, six people were against it, three people had no position, 11 people were not home, and of three of the fours had actually signed the petition against it, but then found out that it was a trial or some other thing, one person found out the money was going to the schools, said that's all I care about. So, you know, three, three of the people that told me they wanted it had signed the petition, and one that took no position had signed the petition. So, you know, what that told me was that there's a big split out there. The number I got was basically 65 in favor and 35 against. I don't know representative, that is, of the whole community. There's two families with children, I think, on that street. I've noticed that the, every, the children families always seem to want it, that, that's been my perception from talking to people generally, and there. So I figured it wasn't biased in favor of the fireworks, because I only had two kids. All the way down my street, I'm in Rosinell, all the way down the far side, up against Saravilla, is an extreme fire hazard area that Roger lives in, and one of my other neighbors, both of whom are just super people. And they're concerned about that, and I factored that in, and I still had, I still had that vote. So I just, I just put it in the back of my head and figured I'd bring it to the, to the meeting. I will tell you that I'm not in favor of continuing on with this without a public vote. I don't think this should be a council decision, I think ultimately... Don't clap too fast, Jim, because you're going to probably get mad at me. I don't think this should be ultimately a council decision, I think the people need to make the decision. And I'd like to be able to vote on this with my own opinion. When I do things here, I don't do it just because I want it. If I think the mass of this community doesn't want it, or I don't think it's really good for the community generally, that's the way I'm going to vote, okay? My opinion's not really going to matter. So frankly, I'd like to be able to vote on this myself, and, you know, in a blind, unseen, anonymous petition in a ballot box. And frankly, I don't know how I'd vote on this right now. If I had to vote on this today for me, I don't know how I'd vote. And the reason is, I don't know what this is going to do. I've talked to enough people, the fire, on the fire authority board, I've talked to people down there, I've talked to, you know, the other mayors, I've talked to a lot of people, people around town, my street, et cetera. And my perception is that this is not inherently dangerous in terms of big risk. Everything I've seen says it's the illegal, so the only thing I've heard that maybe is bad about this is if it masks the illegal. And frankly, I haven't heard any statistics to really indicate that that's the case, at least not substantially. So I really don't know how I'd vote, and I thought to myself, what do I want to know to make that vote so that I can vote? Because I'd just like every one of you. And the answer was, I'd like to see what happened for a year, and I'd also like to know, what are the charities going to make? You know, I've heard arguments, charities only going to make $4,000, $5,000, $7,000 tonight, and on the other side of it, I look at it, and I hear numbers of $100,000, give or take. And I, and I understand, and the fire people or the fireworks people can confirm it, I understand that they've tentatively cut a deal for a 50% split. In other words, 50% of the gross sales goes to the school groups, the other goes to the fire group, and they pay all the expenses. So this is a net 50% of gross sales to those organizations. I don't know how much money that's going to be, I don't know how much is going to sell. And, and, you know, all of that would affect my decision. I'm concerned about the noise. Is it going to, I got a couple of white labs out there, and I don't want them spooked all night, and I don't want them barking for the neighbors. So what's it going to do there? Would it be better if we banned Piccolo Pete's? Is there anything else that really makes noise that, that upsets the dogs? Okay, I'm sure we could probably ban Piccolo Pete's. So, you know, those are some of the issues I'm looking at, and frankly, the only way I can think of to figure it out so that I can make a vote, is I'd like, kind of like to do it for a year, I'd like to see what the charities make, how that goes, whether they want to do it again, were the dogs upset, was there any significant fire damage, did people come in? So that's what I'm looking at. So on behalf of, of this town, I'm leaning toward voting in favor for a snapshot pilot, and I want this thing on the ballot, I'd like to have it on the ballot frankly in November, but I checked with the, with the city manager and council, and it probably costs us $25,000 to have a special election, and I'm not sure it's worth that. Next year, we can put it on the ballot for a nominal sum of a few thousand dollars, and that's where this belongs. But I, for one, would like to have a brief experience, so that I have an intelligent way to analyze this and make a vote. But I have no intention of voting for any prolonged fireworks use in this city without a popular vote of the residents. I also think that if, if we do this for this test period, I want to really blanket this place with police, not frankly, because I'm that worried about it personally, but there's a lot of residents here that are concerned. I've talked to some elderly ladies that talked, they'd said Africa locked themselves in the house that night. And even though I think personally that's not necessary, and it's not real rational, I, I, you know what? They live here, the residents, they've, they've, they've raised, you know, they've, they've been in the city for a long time, they've supported it, and they shouldn't have to feel uncomfortable on the 4th of July. And so whether I think that's a good decision or not, it's, it's still a concern, and there's a number of people that I feel are in that category, and, and I don't want to put people in that position. So my response to that is, if we do this, I want to blanket this place with police. And I've already talked to Jared, and it's a fairly nominal cost, I'm sure there's enough here of money here in the fireworks to cover it. I'd like to see three or four cars out here instead of one, on the 4th of July, so that we can actually enforce and regulate, you know, this, this situation. I heard a lot of complaints about yours. Not really the fires, not really the safe and sane, it's the use, it's the regulation, we don't regulate, we only have one officer. Well, I agree. And you know what? If we do this, then let's have four officers, or three or four cars out here, so that every 45 seconds, we see one of them going by. And that's my gesture to deal with that issue and that group. So I think that's about it.
Yesterday afternoon, I called the mayor of Staten arbitrarily, it was probably about 3:15, unbeknownst that he was coming here today to speak. He didn't know who I was, introduced myself, I think he was a little hesitant to talk to me, and then he told me he was coming to speak anyway. And I asked him the same question as I asked the city of Buena Park. Did you add any extra resources? Because I told him the concerns that we were listening. Did you ever add any more police officers? His answer was no. I said, "What do you do special for the 4th of July?" He says, "They close their public parks at 6 o'clock," because they have public parks in Santa, we don't, in Staten, we don't have any. And they water it. They water it apparently, I think, 4 or 6 o'clock, I don't remember exactly when they water it, but they water it. And the next morning, they have a street cleaner that comes out, which is an extra street cleaning, which we have accounted for also. He pretty much told me the exact same things he said here, we had a little longer conversation, I said, "Thank you very much." On Friday, I took another 30 minutes calling Mr. Vanapool, again, which is the city manager in Buena Park, asking him the same questions I had asked him approximately 60 days ago, wanting to make sure that I got the right answers. He didn't change his answers. There has not been an issue in that city. What I see here is everyone's worried about who's going to come into our city and do something irresponsible. But these people come into our city every single day, thousands of them, they come into the school, they drive their cars in here, they're on Saturday and Sunday, they come here, they play football, they play soccer, they play tennis. We want them to shop here, we want them to come to the Women's League home tour, we want them here. Jacquetal may not want them on Halloween, but, but I go, I go to, I go to Orange on Halloween, so, there you go. There has to be some faith in our fellow neighbors. Orange is a nice city. They do fireworks in Orange, too, they're illegal. It's probably going to go on the ballot, it was on their city council agenda a couple months ago. I ran into their city council people. We have to have some faith in people. Santa Ana's not going to come here, Santa Ana can do it in front of their own house, and they ride in front of their own house. Garden Grove's not coming, West Ministry's not coming. As far as responsibility for our own people, I can't govern that. If either of us had, anybody here has a son, or grandson, or daughter, who is going to take a sparkler and throw it, it's not a sparkler, but it's a flower, and is going to throw it in the neighbor's yard, we can only say no, we can only stop them, we can only watch them. If somebody is too drunk in the middle of the street and they're lighting fireworks, we have a responsibility to go to your neighbor and say, "You know what? Cut him off. Don't allow him. Call the police if you have to," but I think that we're responsible enough to stop them. We wouldn't be living in this community if we were not. Let's try it for one year, and take it to a vote after that, but for one year, I think we can do it again. We had it, all the people who've been living here this many years has had it, for 40 years, you, you had it. And that's the kind of community we built. We built it, and after our, your children are coming back. We came back to Villa Park, we liked it. We didn't burn it down back then, we're not going to burn it down now.
Or me? Whatever. Your pleasure.
Well, you're the mayor, generally, the moderator would go last, I think.
And I will do that.
Okay. First of all, I'm thankful that we are finally having this meeting where there is a complete vetting with an aware public on both sides of the issue. I think that's important. I may be criticized for saying this, but I'm going to say it anyway. Since I have been on the council for over six years, I pray regularly for my city. I pray that God protect my little city, and I say it with great sincerity. I pray for wisdom as a council person, and I pray that God make me continually a better council person, and that is genuinely true. When this issue was first brought forward to us in January by Mr. Barnett and Mr. Reese, I thought, "You know what? Let's, this, this is worth entertaining." I was, had an open mind about it, in spite of the fact that our fire marshal and the Orange County Fire Authority showed up and voiced their opposition to it with some data and some statistics, and they also pointed out the Orange County Grand Jury Report from 2007, so I requested that staff provide that. After reading that Orange County Grand Jury Report, there were many things that alarmed me about it. And then I started questioning whether it really was a wise course of action for our city. We have gone without fireworks of any type, legal or illegal, being permitted for over three and a half decades, with no consequence. We've had very little trouble in the city as a result of it. I do know that our residents have their parties, and they probably will be snagged by one of the increased enforcement, because what they're blowing is not safe and sane. Our residents like to have a little extra special fun. But one of the things that concerned me the most when I read this was the reason for the Orange County Grand Jury's investigation, the reason. "The sale of legal fireworks," I'm reading straight from the report, "is one of the most polarizing municipal issues affecting that, at the time, five Orange County cities, which continue to allow this activity. It has pitted neighbor against neighbor, and associations, and senior groups against nonprofit organizations. Municipal and county safety agencies are constantly trying to combat ever-increasing social chaos, injuries to citizens, and destruction of property that are byproducts of legal fireworks sales. The issues raised continue to be a problem." And then it goes on from there. That's exactly what's happened here. That's exactly what happened here. "As more and more citizens became aware of it, and we had citizens show up at the February meeting, not very many, but a handful, were concerned and expressed their concern, based on what I had read, and that little bit, and the thing that it's not wise for us to try to change three and a half decades that have worked well, when the elders of the city had already visited this item and made a wise decision for the future of our city. We're going backwards, we're reinventing the wheel, and perhaps creating a problem that we originally thought was going to be helping our primary charitable organizations. And so far, the four charitable organizations, the Women's League, the Friends of the Library, the Foundation, and the Rotary, do not appear to be participating." We can verify that. I do have a question of Jared right now. I understand today was the deadline for applying for a fireworks permit, and you've received how many today?
Three applications today.
Were all three applications complete?
For the most part, yes.
For the most part. What has not been complete?
We still need to finalize some site plan reviews, some facility use applications with the Orange Unified School District, because the stands were proposed to be erected on their property. And the last one would have been membership. The code requires that permities submit membership with at least 20 Villa Park residents. However, being that the applications were received from the high school, I took it upon myself to waive that restriction, just using common sense. Villa Park High School, Villa Park connection.
Okay. But in fact, 92% of the students attending Villa Park High School do not reside in Villa Park. That, that's, that's a fact. And I don't see anywhere in the ordinance, ordinance, that there's an exemption for the schools. You know, we do a lot for the community, we do a lot for the schools. The Women's League, almost all the money they raise goes to the school in one fashion or another. The Foundation gives money to the schools and scholarships to the students, as does the Women's League. The Rotary as well, they just received awards for a beautiful thing, and I, one of the things that Brittany talked about was rash decisions. And does it benefit all? Is it beneficial for all concerned? I have heard from residents, when I was on the Women's League tour on Sunday, I had a great time, but I saw so many of them with walkers and canes and having difficult time getting around, that have lived here forever, and they were concerned about, "How quickly could I move? Would anybody pay any attention to little old me if we had a problem in this city?" I respect the Grand Jury Report. I respect the idea of trying to think of new ideas. I don't mind that. But I think when you have a city that is so clearly divided in this fashion, we should step back and respect the desires of our residents... step back and respect the desires of our residents without worrying whether or not the schools have an additional fundraising mechanism. I don't want them to get addicted to this if in fact they love it, and then they are further pressured. One of the other things that was pointed out in this Grand Jury Report which concerns me tremendously has to do with the suppliers. Not that they're bad people, they're out to make a living, they're out to raise a bunch of money, that's what they do, but they are sophisticated business people and operate like any other large corporation. At least one of the Holt Sailors maintains a full-time lobbyist in Sacramento. They are responsive to the concerns of their clients, which tend to be the nonprofit organizations. They have donated substantially to elected officials throughout the county. And it's kind of interesting because as I look at those, and I know most of these elected officials, they tend to live in the cities that permit it. You know, I don't think anyone on this council has accepted any money, but I don't think that we should open ourselves up to being bought and then putting our residents at risk for no reason. We've received, I have now here, 524 signatures, and Terry, if you signed one of these, I don't know, so we'll say 523, signatures that were collected in approximately 13 days, which represents 12.4% of the 4,215 voters in Villa Park. That would easily qualify it for the ballot, that would easily qualify it for regular initiative, through the regular initiative process. However, the residents of this community, when they approached me and asked me to help them, "How can we get through this?", agreed. We do not wish to waste precious city resources by putting this to a vote, that they wanted to peacefully and respectfully petition their elected officials, elected and appointed officials, and ask them to reconsider this item, to rescind it. And that's how we got to this place. It's sad that we got to this place because I think if we had been wise, we would have listened to the far larger number of people that showed up for the second reading in March, and were very unhappy with what the council was preparing to do. But as more and more residents have become aware of it, more and more of them are unhappy. I have one last item, because I don't want to go through this too much, but we've received a lot of emails for and a lot of emails against, a lot of handwritten and typed letters that have come in with residents both pleading or both saying, "I love the idea of fireworks." Everybody's, you know, it's split. This is so bad. This is not the kind of council that we should have that's splitting this city in two with a divisive, highly divisive issue. But one of the emails that I received was from Bonnie Barnett. And she writes that she fully supports the sale of fireworks in the city of Villa Park. The city is full of responsible citizens who would like to celebrate Independence Day safely with fireworks on their property. As PFSO president-elect at Villa Park High School, I brought the subject up at the most recent PFSO meeting, and she was writing this on April 23rd. So I'm assuming that next year you're going to be the president of the PFSO, is that right? Bonnie Barnett is of course the wife of our mayor pro tem. The reason I ask this question is I want to know if technically, does this constitute any sort of conflict of interest? Because Rick Barnett is not here to represent the school or the PFSO, but is here to represent the city. And I'm wondering, should he be required to recuse himself because of that conflict of interest? That's a question for council.
No, the Political Reform Act talks about personal financial interest and financial benefit individually nonprofits, it doesn't, it's like if you're on a church, if you're a member of a church and a church comes in for a permit, you can still vote on it. So it's not under the law conflict of interest.
Okay. So a wife wouldn't be able to exact any due pressure on a husband at all? Got it. As a wife, as a wife, I say that as a wife.
If Rick owned a fireworks company and he was going to be selling fireworks, that's a different issue.
Very good.
That would trigger a conflict.
Well, my position remains unchanged because I see where the residents are, and I am here to represent those who oppose this, and I'm going to continue to request that we rescind the ordinance and keep things the way they have peacefully been for the past three and a half decades.
Let's see a few comments, actually. The main triers and I have been against this along with Councilmember Polly, is that I didn't want uninvited strangers into this city. That is the primary reason, and I didn't think we had a police presence in the way that we've written it, although there's a lot of evidence that we probably didn't need it. But I think the anecdotal evidence of a lot of citizens here is what's really driving this, and they don't like it because they've seen a lot of problems. I think that the other issue that came up is the notifications. I mean, I think a lot of folks thought we were trying to circumvent the folks of the city. That's absolutely not the case. Our city manager Jared and Todd, our council, were very, very explicit about this. But I think, Roger, you brought up some good issues about being able to know this well ahead of time. I think we've got our work cut out for us to make sure that either through the water bills or whatever else, we'll have notifications go out so you can sign up, be part of this council. We want you to be absolutely convinced that we want to be transparent with what we're discussing. And we talked about it amongst ourselves when we meet together, and it's the key item, is the transparency of this council. And we're seeing it tonight, where I let you, everyone speak, once, twice, three times, way more than what's allowed by the rules, but we want you to know that we're here to listen to you and react. I'm still against allowing fireworks this time, but I agree with Rick that if there's a vote at a regular election, which is a minimal cost, that would be something I would be in favor of. Other than that, I think I'm finished talking. Thank you.
I just had one more comment. Greg made me feel guilty about the transparency issue because I was whispering up here to you. So I'm going to share my comment from that whisper so that I've got complete transparency. When our fire chief came up, I whispered to the mayor, and what I whispered was, "Do you think she's giving us her volunteer fire department back?" So now there's complete transparency.
My answer was no to that, by the way, unfortunately. Well, this has been a really tough issue. I had no idea that we would have this much opposition. As you all know, I did work for 28 years as reserve fire captain for OCFA. I have patrolled the streets every 4th of July for every year I have worked for OCFA. I have confiscated many a firework in my days, mostly illegals, obviously. I can tell you all, it is much safer to do fireworks in the street where there are no flammables, rather than in the backyard next to the trees, shrubs, bushes, homes. Our city has a lot of residents that do fireworks illegally. We have made, not crooks, but we make you guys be illegal, right? Because we don't, our government is forcing you not to do it, but you do it anyways. Of course, as a kid, I have very fond memories of doing this with my parents in the front yard, with my neighbors, having food and fun, having a bucket of water, having a hose, the parents are watching what the kids do. I think there are many things we do in life that are not safe. I think driving our car, someone brought up, that's not safe, but we do it, but we're safe, aren't we? We be safe. We walk across busy streets, is that safe? Probably not, I'm guilty, I jaywalk, I run across the street, I'm taking a risk, but I'm safe when I do it. We all, of course, there's lots of things that aren't safe or safe. Fire is not safe. You light a match, it's not safe. We all understand that, of course. But if you do it under the guidelines and you do it in the street, under parental supervision, with all the guidelines we've put in place, guys, we've been talking about this for four months. And we passed it, by the way, which all of you know, and then all of this appears. I will agree that we need to communicate better. We do have good communication channels, we will work on a better way to communicate with our residents. It was brought up, Deborah, you had mentioned the word backwards, we're going backwards. I disagree with that, and this is why. Back in the 70s and 80s, our fire codes were different, our homes were built different. Fireworks were not as safe, safe and sane fireworks were not as safe as they are today. Sparklers were one of the big issues. Little kids would wave those little metal things around, you guys remember them all, they don't have those anymore. Fireworks are safer, homes are built safer. So we're not going backwards, it's a different time, we're going back 30 years, a lot has changed in 30 years. You are seeing a trend of cities add this back in. Why is that? The reasons I just explained. That's the reason. I agree with a vote. If we were to vote on this this November, it would cost the city $25,000 to $33,000. I don't agree with that, and I'm sure you guys wouldn't either. However, if we do the vote next year, it will be a nominal cost, as Mr. Barnett mentioned, it'd be $2,000 to $3,000 to send this to the voters. On the other hand, I feel it is imperative to know what we're voting on. We've heard a lot of people talk about the what-ifs. What if gang members come in the city? What if other people from other cities come in and want to blow them off on our street? What if, you know, all these what-ifs. We need data, guys, we need data. And the only way you're going to get data is to do a trial. And you've heard this council say that if we do a trial, which we did vote on and pass, and there were any issues in our city, do you think we're going to sit up here and say yes to it next year? Of course not. We all agree on that. I've made the comment, "I don't care whether we have it or don't." That is true. I have no agenda, I couldn't care less. I don't plan to go do it in the front of my home, to be honest with you, my children are out of my house now. And I've heard lots of people say, "Well, my whole street doesn't want it." Well, guess what? By us passing this doesn't mean you have to do it. Your whole street cannot do it if you don't want to, it's no big deal. So, you know, I really feel we need a trial to base our public vote on, otherwise we don't know what we're voting on. The other thing is, if we try it this 4th of July, and it is a flop, and something does go wrong, and we don't like what we saw, then it will never go to the voters because we're not going to allow it anymore. We're going to say, "Okay, it's not going to work, it didn't work out for us." Somebody asked, "Where did the idea come from?" I want to respond to that. This idea came from none of the council members. This idea came at a Rotary event. It was a function at Rotary, an offsite of here, it was a party function, if you will. It was brought up by none of us, and the idea was talked about that evening and circulated that evening with Rotary folks at that event, with wives and husbands and whatever, and the consensus was, "Yeah, what a great idea. Bring that back, this government's been, you know, they've been pushing things on us, that gives our freedoms to do it if we want or not, all the nonprofits can make money. Why should we have Santa Ana make all the money? People go to, Villa Park residents go to Santa Ana, buy fireworks, give them the money, and then they come back here and blow them off. Why not let our nonprofits make some money? They do it anyways here." That's where the idea came from, just so you guys know, that's where the idea came from. I don't believe anyone up here has an agenda, nobody is getting their pockets thicker, no one's getting paid off, the fireworks companies, we had never even spoke with a fireworks company before this whole thing. So, you know, we are residents like you guys, we love our city, we live here, we want a safe city, we want the best city, we want the hidden jewel, we don't want our city ruined either. I mean, we're, we live here, right? So why would we do that? I myself would not agree to do this if I didn't think it was going to be a good turnout, meaning we're not going to have issues. You heard from the mayor of Stanton. By the way, I didn't ask him to come, he asked me at the sanitation district, "What's going on with fireworks? We have them in our city, and we don't have issues, and we're Stanton." Well, Stanton is a lot different city than Villa Park, we all understand that. If they don't have issues, why do we think we would have issues? I mean, they should have issues, honestly, I would think, right? I mean, you've got to be kidding me. If they don't have issues, my gosh, I can't imagine us having issues. So therefore, I do feel we need to try it in order to base our vote. But I also respect our residents, I respect the people that don't want it, and I listen. And we got lots of emails, guys, we have spent hours and hours and hours on this issue in the last weeks, believe you me. It's been, I don't want to say a thorn in the side, but it's been a big, a lot of stuff going on with this, it's occupied our minds. I have thought very hard about this, and I do respect every comment I have heard. But I feel we need a trial in order to base our vote, and I do feel it should go to the voters. Those are my comments.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the first reading of ordinance number 2013-577, repealing ordinance number 2013-574, which is allowing safe and sane fireworks. I vote that we repeal it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Mills. Jared?
Mayor.
No, no more comments, we're done with comments. We're ready for the vote.
We pay you to be there, what do you mean?
We had our public comments, we're now ready for the vote.
How many ballots per bit do we have? Without a question? How many, how many, how many do we have? We have none.
Jared, call for the question.
Motion on the floor is to approve the first reading of ordinance 2013-577, repealing ordinance number 2013-574, which is Article 11-2 of the Villa Park Municipal Code pertaining to safe and sane fireworks. Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
No.
Mayor pro tem Barnett?
No.
Mayor Reese?
No. Thank you.
All right.
So we need...
We need to have another item.
Jared, do we have that cleanup item tonight or not?
Yes, that's tonight.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us what that is, Jared?
The cleanup item would be the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2013-575, repealing section 11-1.3.59.
Trying to conduct business here, guys.
Quiet, please.
Go ahead, Jared.
Good job.
Regarding safe and sane fireworks, this ordinance is a cleanup of the fire code, thereby allowing fireworks this 4th of July. We need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mayor Reese?
Yes.
Mayor pro tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
No.
Councilwoman Mills?
No.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will adjourn our meeting. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, May 28th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you all for your input and good night.
Pissed me up.[1772.63]